All right, good evening. I'd like to call the August 5, 2024 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Conley. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting.
I can't say it's me.
First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Scully for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In honor of the Softball World Series, this week I wanted to offer a prayer for softball players.
Love it.
There you go. Let us pray. God allow me, oh, sorry. God allow them to play their best, but with integrity. Allow competition to make them stronger, but never bitter, jealous, or inconsiderate of others or the game. Always encourage them to see their opponents as people and keep their heart filled with compassion and sportsmanship. If they shall see the blessing of victory, allow them to be proud, but to keep them reckless from boasting. If victory is denied, keep them from feeling defeated, yet allow them to be genuinely proud of a worthy competitor, as they say a good game. At the end of each day, help them to find the life lessons that you want to help them learn, so that they may grow as an athlete and as a person. If through the softball field they set an example, allow it to be one that they can be proud of. And may we all learn from their example, as a council and as a community. May their teamwork, sportsmanship, hard work, and dedication inspire us all to be our best. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Conley and Foreman.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request the council item number 10 under New Business, municipal agreement for HB 0021, replacement of bridge north 419 over Bell's Branch on Oxford Road.
Motion approved.
Second.
With amendment, oh, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, Mayor, council also requests that the council add to the agenda, following Mr. Manager's item, an announcement of a settlement in the case of KLA Holdings versus the city of Greenville, and also after that add a closed session motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's revised.
Second.
No, go ahead.
Had you finished your motion?
I did. I was gonna take out the closed session. We shall go into closed session.
We do that at the end of the meeting anyway, don't we?
Yeah. All right, so motion's been approved for the amended agenda by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion has passed the sixth year.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public items that were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week, shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who have registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains, after all persons who have registered have spoken. Individuals who have not registered will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay, first speaker is Tracy Donahue. Ms. Donahue, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Will I come over here?
Yes, right there. Okay.
Good evening, all of you. I'm a citizen. I live in the River Hills subdivision, and I'm here to speak about the entryway there. They're building something new, and I'm very concerned, because I have to confess, sometimes I have to turn right to turn left. You ever done that? Or you go out in the suicide lane, and I know you shouldn't, but you kind of have to. We're already at that place right now. We're already backed up when I try to turn left, especially in that area. We're adding this new development. Now, I'm not a city planner. I don't know the best thing to do in this situation, but I wanted to draw your attention to it, and I wanted you to think about it carefully, because I think it could be as bad as the gauntlet. Have you ever heard of the gauntlet?
Yeah.
You know what the gauntlet is?
Oh, yeah.
On 10th Street there? It's like going through the gauntlet, 10th Street and Greenville Boulevard. Hey, I don't want another gauntlet. We're right there by the Port of Town light, and I just think it could be a city planning disaster, and I don't want that to happen again, as it did down there on 10th Street. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker. It looks like B.E. Hyland?
Alexander.
Alexander. Sorry about that. Mr. Alexander, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
So I've never been to one of these before. Thank you for having me up. Councilmembers and city staff, I thought you should be addressed, I guess. So we moved here last year when I retired from the Coast Guard, so I could attend ECU, and I live in the same neighborhood as Tracy. I'm here to also speak about the development that's going in at the end of the street. Prior to even knowing about this, my wife and I were acutely aware of the danger at the front of my neighborhood. You gotta turn right just to turn left, which is already bad. You gotta go down to the Lowe's to make a U-turn to come around. There's a speed limit sign when you come in on the Greenville side by the food line. It says city speed limit is 35, but yet you get another 100 yards and it picks right back up to 50 right in front of my neighborhood. Daily, there are 60, 70 mile an hour cars going down that road. Just a few months ago, a woman went off the road and slid through the trees into the cemetery, and you're about to put a kids clinic on that corner. There needs to be a light, should be a light, but now I'm being told that we can't do that because it's a county highway or something like that, so we don't have any jurisdiction. But the city annexed my neighborhood, so that you guys can get the taxes for that area, but now the city's hamstrung. And so what they can do to control the problem? You build a clinic there? We've got apartments being built right next to Lowe's right now. They're talking 300 apartments coming in. Between those apartments and this kids clinic, it's a matter of time. Somebody's gonna die at that intersection. That's all I have. Thank you for having me up here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just so in reference, is this in reference to anything that we've got on the agenda for Thursday night? No.
Nope.
Okay. This is the new development that they're doing on the corner right there? Okay. All right, sounds good. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay, next speaker is Dr. Yoshi Newman. Dr. Newman, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hello, council and city staff. My name is Yoshi Newman, and I live in Greenville. And I'm here because I want to face-to-face thank you, and thank you again for approving the funding for a sustainability manager in your last budget round. So there was an EAC, Environmental Advisory Commission, meeting this last Thursday, and we are still excited about this possibility. And I have repeatedly said, since January, when I've talked to all of you, that the operative words for this council are opportunity and possibility. And this position, the sustainability manager, offers so much opportunity and possibility for Greenville to grow into an environmentally responsible and knowledgeable community for the 21st century. So we learn together, and every day, almost every day, I learn more and more about our city. And I want to reflect back on the night of that budget vote, about some of the conversation that took place amongst the council before taking that vote. So Councilman Robinson, I believe you had previously stated that you thought that staff had done a great job on the budget. Dr. Jeffrey McKinnon, Dr. Robert Shaw, myself, and Jeff Monaco from the Sierra Club came to the council three times to speak about the value of a sustainability manager for Greenville. And I want to read for you just real quickly what the charge of the Environmental Advisory Commission is. The Environmental Advisory Commission is hereby created for the primary purpose of recommending matters of environmental concern and serve as technical advisory to the city council. So we did that three times. We had positive response from council. And so I was very confused that that night you seemed to flip your position on that proposal, and instead offered that the city might be better served by hiring a consultant. So I want to lay out what my experience has been about hiring consultants. We could have spent over $100,000 hiring a consultant to come in and do a review, and come back to the council with a recommendation that most likely would have said, you need a sustainability manager, which is what the Environmental Advisory Commission had already said, Councilmember Blackburn had also said repeatedly, and other members had said that. I mean, it was a pretty clear case. So if the idea was we can save the taxpayers' money by not having a sustainability manager, the consultant would have actually wasted taxpayer money. So I want to make that point about a consultant. Let's make sure that it's money well spent. But my key point being, thank you so much for offering this opportunity and possibility, that I'm confident that in a short period of time, we will all know how incredibly valuable that position is for our community. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
There are no additional registered speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, guys. I just got off from work this morning. Kind of catch up on my sleep and late.
Hey, I can appreciate the fact that you came to visit us instead of sleeping.
Yes, sir. My name is Angel Mondragon, Army veteran. I lived in my neighborhood, River Hills, for like, since 2007, before the city became annexed, before the neighborhood became annexed to the city. And, you know, we seen a lot of change since then. The Shit's Gas Station, the Lowe's, the Walmart, Aldi's, state employees, which all things are good for us, in a way, because that means the city's growing. But in that case, also, the traffic has increased a lot. Accidents had increased a lot in that intersection, not only on that intersection, also in the intersection from Aldi's and Walmart. And not to say down the road from 10th Street, talking about Greenville Boulevard, and 10th Street, and down to the ECU line to where you have that line, that light for the students, that I'm surprised there has not been a bad accident there with that light. But I'm here to represent my city, not only my city, my neighborhood. I'm 45, about 45 years old. I have a three-year-old. I waited to have a family until I have a stability, you know, because when I was in the military, it was hard to, being deployed, and being able to be there for your kids. And now that I see my three-year-old kid, my three-year-old son, I don't think I see him crossing across the street. I used to be able to walk, you know, to walk across Walmart from cemetery. My mama used to be able to cross, but now, my mom is 82 years old, and, Mom, no, if you're gonna cross, that specific, it's gotta be from 9:00 to 11:00, because that's when like, pretty much the traffic has gone and slowed down. And maybe Sunday mornings, when everybody's asleep, you can cross walking there. But other than that, no. I don't want somebody calling me. And not only that, not long ago, a lady got killed at the food line in parking lot by a 20-year-old. I'm talking about a senior citizen. They got killed by a 21-year-old kid, I think, racing on the food line in parking lot, rather on 10th Street. So that right there tells you how much traffic that business is gonna bring, not only just bringing to the neighborhood. And to me, I recommend, since Greenville is known to be a sports city, that we bring, we proud of ourselves for bringing sports to the kids, why not put, I'm sorry, why not put a pickleball or basketball court in the entrance for our neighborhood kids, and maybe have the city buy that spot, and have the office be by Lowe's behind there, which they already have a stoplight built, and nobody's gonna fuss because it's right there. Anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mondragon.
Thank you for your service to our country. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
So my name is Corey. I'm a disabled vet, two tours in Iraq. I've lived here since June 2013, lived at River Hills since August 2013. We have one way in, same way out. I just want to know whose idea it was to allow a business to go next to a residence that only has one way in and one way out. How much did you all get paid to put it there? You all work for us. You all answer to us. We can't walk in and get a meeting with the mayor, because his secretary will not allow it. You don't believe me? I can show you the videos. We're not rich enough to get a meeting with the mayor about important stuff that we have going on. You all are elected to serve the city and the county, but yet people with the money can get a business put in next to a resident that has one street, that's gonna have hundreds of cars using that little road to go in there. So my question is, how big are your pockets getting? We can do a FOIA request to find out. What are you guys not telling us? When someone has requested a meeting before the stuff was started, and they were blown off, why? But none of y'all want to answer these questions. Remember, we know when you guys' elections are up, and we can very easily get you removed from your guys' spots. It's not that hard. You all think you have deep pockets to get re-elected. We, the people, that have hundreds of veterans behind us, can get you guys removed. So why would you all allow a business to go into, next to a residential area with one street? Who planned this? How was it planned? And how much money went into you guys' pockets?
And that's time.
That's all we're asking. It's not much. It's not hard to answer the question. It's very simple. Thank you. We, the people, will find out, because you work for us.
Sir, thank you for your service to the country, but I will say, all you have to do is send us an email. I don't work here at City Hall every single day. That's not our form of government. Our city manager is here. You're welcome to contact me directly. I'd be happy to sit down and have a conversation with you. I will tell you, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the council. I didn't get paid any money for a development coming into our community. And I think if you would like, I think our city staff could probably explain the reason that that business is there, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but it was probably zoned that way already.
I just asked the question.
Sure, yeah. And all I'm trying to do is just answer your questions.
This very hard to get appointments. It's very, very hard.
You're welcome to shoot me an email. I'd be happy to sit down and have a conversation with you. I have no problem with that.
I walked in, talked to your secretary numerous times, and was told to leave.
Okay, I can't. I can't talk. I don't have a secretary. We have a city clerk.
Well, the mayor, the lady that comes down and makes appointments for you, for the mayor.
I don't have a secretary. I don't. I mean, you can look at our budget. I don't have a secretary.
Okay, well, who's the one that makes appointments for you?
Our city clerk right here.
Okay, well, she's very rude. I have her on video.
Okay.
She was in District 12.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the feedback. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, for coming.
Seeing now, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to our agenda, to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, under the consent agenda, I authorize execution of confirmation payment for Langston Farms LLC regarding its obligation under previously entered municipal reimbursement agreement. Item number two, opioid litigation resolution and supplemental agreement for funds from additional settlement of opioid litigation. Item number three, resolution authorizing the interlocal agreement with Pitt County, the Pitt Area Transit System, relating to providing para-transit transportation services within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Greenville. Item number four, contract award of trans systems for construction, engineering, and inspection services associated with the Bright Speed fiber installation project. And item number five, various tax refunds greater than $100.
If I may, I'd like to pull item three from the consent agenda.
Motion to approve item 1 through 5, excluding 3.
Second.
All right, motion to ma'am. By Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Move on to item number three.
Item number three, resolution authorizing the interlocal agreement with Pitt County, Pitt Area Transit System, relating to providing para-transit transportation services within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Greenville. Ask for, to come forth, Director of Public Works Kevin Mulligan, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mulligan, for answering our question. This may be beyond the purview of what we as a city can do, or city council. One of my concerns, love Pats, love, and I'm presuming that we're talking about Pats here. One of the issues with Pats, I worked with someone who was very handicapped, had multiple handicaps, including mental handicaps. It was very difficult for her to kind of understand the way it worked, and what she needed to do. You got a call before, I think it's 2:00 the day before. It was just very difficult for her. And I wonder, is there any way that we can, and she also had, she was at zero income for a while, and I wonder if there's any way we can waive the fee for our disabled passengers, disabled members of the public, and maybe have those guidelines more flexible. And if it's beyond our purview, I understand that.
I'd say this, that there has not been a fee, right? Since we're not charging on our bus, there is no fee being charged to the rider since 2020.
Within the city of Greenville?
Within the city of Greenville.
Okay, all right. Maybe that person was.
If she's using it for other purposes outside of city Greenville, then, I'm not sure exactly what the fee is, but within the city of Greenville, if she scheduled it with Pats, the fee currently is zero.
Okay, that's great to know. I didn't know that.
Okay.
And then as far as the way the system works, and having to call 2:00 the day before, and that kind of.
That is the requirement of that system, in that you have to, they're scheduling all of the rides, and so you're calling the day before, at least the day before, to schedule that ride. And there isn't a lot of flexibility there. We can talk to Pats about that, but that is the way generally para-transit systems are set up across the country.
Okay, and if that's just the way it is, for this particular person, I know that because there were some mental hurdles there, it was very difficult for, you know, to do that, just forgot, didn't think of it, just kind of, it was the morning of, I've got a doctor's appointment, that kind of thing.
Sure, sure. I mean, you know, they will take multiple reservations, if you will, right? So if she's the same time every day, the same place every day, they'll accommodate that.
And Councilmember Blackburn, if you would like to share that person's information with us, we can contact that person to see if there's any way that we can help them in any way we can.
Thank you. I know you will. I appreciate that, Kevin. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve item number three.
Second.
All right, motion to ma'am. By Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passed the sixth year.
Shall move on to new business.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to, item number six, under New Business, presentations by boards and commissions. We have the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority here to give their update tonight. I'd like to call forward the executive director of the Pitt Greenville Airport, Bill Hopper, for the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the mayor and city council, and look forward to giving you an update of how things are going at Pitt Greenville Airport. I have our chairman and the board, John Banks, with me, and we'll go through, just kind of give you an update here. Okay, first of all, just kind of recap on where we are at Pitt Greenville Airport. We do have 23 full-time employees and five part-time employees, eight board members, law enforcement from the Pitt County Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff's Office, American Airlines with a connecting hub to Charlotte, Transportation Security Administration. We have our rental cars, as well as first-class bistro restaurant that's located. And since last year, we have put together a patio outside, which is just right on the ramp, and you can have a look at the airplanes as they come and go. Next is just kind of go over the operations, specifically the passengers. As you can see, pre-pandemic, we were at close to 55,000 employments and 55,000 de-employments. And if you look on the, you'll see that 2020, obviously, that was the pandemic, and the pandemic hit us hard. And then, of course, we start getting back up to around 37,000. And we've kind of been growing just a little bit. We had a little bit of a downturn last year, and then we've climbed above to where we had last year our best year since the pandemic, with 38,207 employments, people that got on a plane. This one right here, I like to show this one. This is something that the NC State does for us every year, and this shows you where every flight that was filed, flight plans, where people flew nonstop. And as you can see, we've got every state but Oregon, Montana, Minnesota are covered in nonstops, and I think the year before, the only one we didn't have was New Mexico. So as you can see, you know, Greenville, Pitt Greenville Airport is not just an airport where people are just kind of maybe, you know, flying one or two states away. It's the access to the entire country, and in many cases, to the world as well, for a lot of travelers. Yes, sir?
These are not all American.
No, no, okay, definitely. These are not un-American. This is, well, American you see is Charlotte. That's the big circle, you know, in North Carolina, but other than that, everything else is nonstop flights that are on private aircraft. And of course, the further out you go is probably gonna be the corporate jets. This goes into the economic impact study. I did show this last year. I'll just kind of flip through it. We are gonna be having a new economic impact study in January, and we're excited to see how that one is. But, you know, what I've reported last year is that, you know, the economic impact of aviation to the state of North Carolina is, you know, 72 billion, 330,000 jobs, 23 billion in personal income, and then 3.7 billion in tax revenue. If you look right here, this is just a map that shows all the airports, the public use airports in North Carolina. There's 72, and 10 commercial service airports, of which Pitt Greenville is one of the 10 commercial service airports. Greenville itself, we have, we provide over 1,200 jobs, just shy of 85 million in personal income, 14 million in state and local taxes, and then a total economic input, output of $267 million to the area. And this just is an update. We showed this again last year, but this just also provides. And this just is an update. We showed this again last year, but this just also provides FY '23. As you can see, we're pretty much really about the same as we were last year. The, you know, in spite of having more passengers fly out, Americans finding ways to save money. And that's part of, you know, so you can see that they have gone down a little bit in the revenue we get from them. But the base corporate and general aviation, you can see right there, general aviation has gone up considerably. And a lot of that has to do with the corporate aircraft that are transients. So we've had, had a pretty good year there. This is just, shows just aviation growth. This is a slide that did show last year. Just to kind of remind you of where we would be, because, you know, if we're able to, right now, we have seven new corporate hangars that have been completed in about the last year and a half. We have two that will be complete mid this month, probably in about a week or two. And those two hangars are already rented out. So these are hangars that, that are an opportunity to bring more businesses, more economic growth to the area. Right now, we have one aircraft that, that we just signed a lease on, that's going to, and it's a $22 million aircraft that's going to be bringing that tax revenue to the area in property taxes. This is just future growth. This is some of the areas that we have. When we're done with these last two hangars, we've got nowhere else to grow, you know, in the area that we are right now. And so right now, we've got these other areas that are on this slide where we do have potential for growth. One of them is on the, on the west side. If you look on the 24 acres on the left, that, that is the old runway. And that's an area where we could have some development. You go to the north, we have the 90 acres. That is, that does not have access to the airfield. However, that's an area where we could potentially provide industry to, to, to the north of the river in the area we are. And so we, it's something where we continually try to promote that. And then, of course, you go down the lower right, you see the 24 acres. That is really the next place that we have for any sort of hanger development or other industrial growth that's related to the airport. And as you see right here, this just kind of shows a close-up. This is right now where we are in the midst of doing some rezoning in that area that we'll be approaching the city for in, in the next couple of months. And we do have a public meeting tomorrow night with our, our local community to, to go over this. We had one in October, and we're going to have it tomorrow night just to update the, the local community. This gets more into air service. We constantly, I know that this is one of the, the items that the community looks to us often for is, is expanding air service. We continue to, to work to expand air service. We are, are right now reaching out to different community partners, kind of re, you know, we already have had those pre-pandemic, and we're, we're starting to kind of try to, you know, make those connections again. And this just shows the catchment area. This is where you see in yellow, these are all the zip codes where if, if, if things were equal with Pitt Greenville to all the other commercial service airports, this is, this is where we would be the closest airport or the most convenient to, to leave out of. This is just something to show you, this is where American Airlines, this is one stop flying out of Charlotte, which, so that just shows all the different destinations that you could have going on American. And this is one of our, our main, you know, types of service that we're trying to get, which is out of Dulles. And just shows you how we can expand air service if we're able, just to get this, this one location here. And last, I'll turn it over to John Banks.
I'm a factoid guy. First, I'd like to thank the members, PJ's laughing, he knows me, that came to our meeting. We had, we had a little seminar, a little get-together to get you more involved in what our decision-making process is at the airport, our points of revenue, our expenses. And thank y'all for coming, because we can't do it in this environment. It's just so much data. And Mike is, City Manager has driven that, helped us with it. In, in the background, he's, he's asking questions all the time for the city and for your, your members here. But he's learned quite a bit in the last year, I would say. Couple of things. I'm a pilot. I'm an aircraft owner. I've been flying since I was 25. I'm 70 years old now, and I can't play golf, so I do something. We have those hangars Bill talked about. We, we built five hangars with COVID money. COVID was a terrible thing, and if it wasn't for COVID money, the airport would have been in terrible financial shape. By having the airlines cut back from five flights a day to three, that puts us in arrears. We, we're still using COVID money, some of that COVID money to make up the difference of in arrears. And with that continued until we get more flights and more revenue, we're trying everything. And PJ, I think, was on our board when we first started the building process, trying to build a way to prosperity. Well, it takes a long time. He's in real estate. He knows. And Councilman Robinson, he knows how the money goes and don't go sometimes. The, the problem with the hangars is the money's not quick. Long-term, it pays the bills. Long-term, it creates tax base for us. Bill was mentioning one airplane. Just in three airplanes we'll get this year, it'll be approximately $50 million in tax base. That's huge. That's like a lot of subdivisions. Those airplanes fuel the economy. We don't use the school systems, the roads, public infrastructure. So that's, that's good for not hampering the city to put money out for those, those processes. Last year alone, we spent $10 million in grants, improving capital improvements at the airport, taxiways, runways. They were funded by the federal government. We had to come up with 10%. And that 10% was funded by PFC charges, passenger facility charges, which every ticket we sell out of there or the airline sells, we get a percentage of it. That money helps us to offset the 10% grant match we have to make. So no money comes out of our direct budget or any other, any other sources. So that's a real, real good thing for us. We would probably be real close to breaking even if we had those two flights back with American. We were doing this years and years ago, but we make our revenue from passengers, parking the cars, renting cars, and the airline fees. Otherwise, our revenue sources come from selling airplanes fuel, leasing them hangars, and parking. And that's it. We're very limited on our revenue potential. We can't tax. So we're very limited on what our revenue potentials are. Also TSA will no longer fund our LEO match. We have law enforcement there. We're open up all day, every day. That's another $40,000, $50,000 a year in deficits. We, we used to get money for, from the federal government. We don't anymore. That hurts us. In 2022, 2023, we have an audit every year, just like the city does. We were clean. No, no problems with the audit. It was a great audit. We're currently undergoing an audit right now. We don't expect anything different from that one. We've added internship at the airport. We have interns there now that help with the airplanes on the ramp, they help with customer service. And we try to train the future people in aviation, what the airport does, the jobs at the airport, and give them a pathway to get in the aviation where otherwise they, they couldn't do that. One thing I like to praise the NC Alliance and Pitt County for development, they try to find development for the airport. They're working hard every day, trying to get opportunities for us to develop jobs at the airport and for infrastructure in Pitt County. Thank them. And that's all I got. Any questions? Nope. Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And so the meeting is tomorrow at 5:30 at the conference room of the airport. Is that correct? And so I, I heard you mention that you wanted to give the community an update. I hope that you also be listening for their concerns as well in terms of the expansion of the airport. You also mentioned that there may, the acquiring of the, or the usage of the 90 acres north of the river would provide for industry. Can you talk a little bit more about that or any, any type of job prospects?
We've had that property for years. The, the only issue is some of the developers coming in, we cannot sell that land. We have to have a long-term lease, which we are capable of going to 50 years possibly. So they can get their return of their investment, but it's not a sale. And we, the market rate is very, very low compared to what they could do in a lot of places. It's, it's a great location. You're right next, next to the highway, as y'all know. It's got good boundaries. It's, it's a great piece of property. It's high ground. Remember, years ago, we had flooding. That's, that's high ground over there. It's, it's a good location. We just hadn't got, we've had one or two inquiries about it over the years, but we hadn't had any in quite a while. But that 90 acres is ready for development. You got gas, sewer, water, right on the highway there. It's not a, not a big issue at all.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else?
I just wanted to mention that I want to make it clear that I definitely support the growth and development as it relates to community engagement. That, for me, is a first priority. I go by order of operations. That always starts and ends with community engagement. I wanted to lift up from our last conversation that I had a meeting this past Thursday with citizens north of the river. There were well over 60 participants in that meeting, just talking about different things that are going on that impact north of the river. But one of those was to make sure that they were aware of your meeting tomorrow. Out of all the citizens there, there were maybe eight that knew about tomorrow's meeting. We talked about the 500-foot rule and making people aware of engagement and everything.
Can I address that for you?
No, one second, one second. What I wanted to elevate is that in an urban setting, it's different than in a rural setting. And so I just wanted to just elevate that. There will be good participation at the meeting tomorrow, but kind of had to go the extra mile to make sure citizens knew about that meeting.
Okay, we, we, I've been on the board over 10 years, and when I first got on the board, there was no community involvement. And when Jerry Vickers was the executive director at the time, and Jerry and I, and the current chairman at the time said, okay, we have a grant coming in that affects the north end where we repaving the runway or digging ditches out, we need to inform them. I probably went to 20, I've probably been over 20 different meetings in the community. I went to Noah's Ark for meetings there at church. I've been to people's houses for neighborhood meetings over the years. And Jerry did too. And Biddy, Biddy came in Stansberry. She did the same thing. Small groups, Oak Grove, I think, is the one north of there. We know, met with them several times. This past meeting in October, we had a packed house with that one. Great questions were asked of what we're trying to do at the airport in general. We had nothing to hide. We tell them exactly what we know, what, what we can do. Information is powerful. People need to know.
That's why.
We, we agree with you. We reach out. And I think on this current meeting for tomorrow, we went past the 500 feet. We went even further out and sent letters. So everybody that had property in that area got a letter, and people passed the normal requirement got a letter, because we want people to know. It's their neighborhood. No matter what the distance is, it's never enough, because the airport's there. So we enjoy community involvement. We need it. I enjoy it when it affects my community. And they deserve that right to be heard.
And again, I, I was just sharing that for awareness, not even a, a form of criticism, just wanting you all to be aware that, you know, and they, they, their, their communication has been that they support growth also, but they want to know how it impacts them.
Well, we're, we're very concerned, several things. Bill, tell you, I'm, I'm pretty hard on this. Number one's the environment, whether it's in the ground or the air or the noise. All of it's encompassing in your neighborhood. We're very aware of what the airport does. We've all, I've lived by airport several years. You have to be aware of people's feelings and their emotions. It's their home, and they need to know. And it's our job to inform them. So we try to do our best, and we appreciate the feedback.
Also, just, we did, I did reach out to Carolyn Glass, who is further away. And she, she's, I, I find her as a very good source for outreach to, to the entire Greenville Terrace community. We've also had, I've had six people from the community call me when they get the letters. And I've met with them, and I've taken them out, and I've shown them. And I've gotten very good support, you know, that when they hear what we're trying to do and how we're trying to, you know, make, make some, you know, some, some improvements in, in the area with regard to, to businesses and possibilities of, of additional, you know, business up north of the river. And they, I've had some excitement from them. And I'm very, I'm very much looking forward to tomorrow night. I do know that nothing's perfect, but I do look forward to engaging the community tomorrow night.
And we have a very aware board. Our board wants to reach out, and they're very aware of the, the business community. Your representative, Mr. Robinson over here, is very in tune to the needs of the council. He makes his well-known. So as you know, he can, he can make his points well-known, and we're, we're very apt to listen to it, because it, it is important for the community. And it's important for y'all to, to know what's going on. So thank you very much. Anything else?
Great. Thank you both for all that you do. I know the challenges that it, it is that you guys have to run the airport. And I know that, you know, unless you really go to the meetings and attend them, I don't think you get a real good idea of, you know, the limitations that the airport has and the limited resources that you have and limited sources of income to be able to expand, you know, throughout the community. I have people that always ask about, what are you doing to help the airport? Or what can we do to bring more commercial flights? I mean, you guys are working on it, right? You know, and I get it. And, and you've had many conversations with different airline, and different airlines over the years. And we've all tried to help out and do it where we can. We've made adjustments. I know that we've made adjustments for income-wise, for the personal property that's out there that's being stored, the, the jets that are out there. I know the county and the city have come together for that. And so I just, I, I hope people in the community understand that it's not like the airport's just sitting there and just operating on its own. You guys are doing everything you possibly can to continue to grow the airport, provide more commercial services, provide more services for the entire community. It's just very limited. And I don't think a lot of people in the community understand that. So thank you guys for your effort. We appreciate all that you do.
PJ, you were on, you were on the board. You saw the backstory, how stuff has to happen.
Yeah.
And we've been, I've been personally to 20 different meetings with airlines over the years. Bill goes, goes to three a year. We try to get different people besides me and board members. We had Dave from NC Alliance.
Oh, yeah, Dave, he, he went with me twice.
Yeah, we had NC Alliance with, with us twice. And so those are speed dates. You get 20 minutes to lay your PowerPoint out and, and come on, guys, we're great here. And they go, yeah, we've heard that from the guy before you too. That's great. But you gotta be, keep going. If you don't go to the dance, you're going to get asked to dance. So we spend the money. We go to be seen, be heard, promote Pitt Greenville Airport and the community, and the colleges, university, Pitt Community College. We're a good advocate for it, but we just gotta keep trying till we get one. And we're trying to increase the, the number of flights for American too. We're trying everything we possibly can to get more opportunities for the airport.
Well, John just said that we need to get on better dating sites.
We're doing the best we can. Thank you.
John, I appreciate y'all's presentation and what you do.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, resolution declaring 13 vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorization to purchase 15 replacement vehicles and equipment for various city departments. Ask Director of Public Works Kevin Mulligan to come forward for the short presentation.
I love that word. I love that word.
Good evening, council. This, this item, as the city manager said, is for the resolution declaring 13 vehicles and equipment as surplus and the purchase of, of 15. So we're replacing 15 vehicles, and 13 of those 15 are going to be surplus. The funds for that, for that surplus will be put back into the VRF. So what is the VRF? The Vehicle Replacement Fund was established by City Council in 2007. Departments essentially pay rent into the fund. The VRF was created so that the existing vehicle can be replaced at the end of its useful life. So if a vehicle costs $40,000 and has a life of 10 years, it would pay rent over that 10 years. And if we do it at a 4% interest rate, it would pay close to $50,000. So $50,000 would be available for the replacement of that vehicle after 10 years. All right? That's essentially what, what, for every vehicle, multiply that for every vehicle, and that's what a Vehicle Replacement Fund is set up to do. All right, funding for the VRF is provided annually by all of the funds, so general funds, solid waste funds, stormwater, transit. And again, when a new vehicle's purchased, there's a rental rate calculated, and that rental rate is to replace the vehicle at the end of its useful life. Talk about useful life. This is the replacement schedule. Police vehicles have a life of about five years. Side loaders, about five years. Moving down to fire apparatus, 15 years. And we talked about we're replacing 15, and we're surplusing 13. So to the vehicles, a fire truck and ambulance, we are putting into reserve status. So 15 years is frontline for the fire trucks. EMS is, is five years. And transit bus, we see FTA guidelines dictate that to be 12 years. All right, there are this many vehicles, 728. All right, there are this many vehicles, seven hundred and twenty-eight. Both of those in, in public works and police, but we also have obviously recreation parks and fire. Vehicles being purchased, fire truck and ambulance there. Six PD SUVs and two pickup trucks, as well as a backhoe bucket truck and a vector truck for our stormwater folks. All right. Recommendation is to, uh, City Council approve the resolution declaring fifteen vehicles being replaced. Authorizing financial services managers to proceed with the sale of thirteen surplus vehicles. So the, the fire truck and ambulance we'd hold on to, the other thirteen we'd sell. Total cost to the Vehicle Replacement Fund is three point five seven seven million. Any questions?
Any questions? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Scully. I'm going to give this one to, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We got another short presentation, right?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, we do. Item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number One to the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Twenty-four dash zero thirty-eight. Capital Projects Fund Ordinance Seventeen dash zero twenty-four. Engineering Capital Projects Fund Ordinance Twenty dash zero one nine. The Occupancy Tax Fund Ordinance Number Eleven dash zero zero three. And the newly established Capital Project Management Fund. Call forward Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner for the short presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a Budget Ordinance Amendment Number One for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The budget ordinance will affect the general fund, various capital project funds, as well as the occupancy tax reserve fund. Item A will be to recognize capital projects within their designated fund based on projects. These are projects that were part of the original budget ordinance that we approved back in June. That'll be going to the Public Works Capital Project Fund, which will increase it by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as well as the Engineering Capital Project Fund, which will increase by three point three million dollars for street preservation management program. Item B will be to carryover funding from twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year for one-time project expenditures. And that will increase the general fund by one point seven million dollars. And I'll go into a little bit more details about those on the next slide. Will be, item C will be to appropriate funds for the Aboveat Solar Job Creation Grant. This will increase the general fund by a hundred thousand dollars. Item D will be to transfer reserve occupancy taxes to fund the sports complex task force cost, which will increase both the occupancy tax fund as well as the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund by forty-five thousand dollars. We have item E, which will be closing fire station number eight land acquisition project and establishing the burn facility project within the newly established capital project management fund. It will be no change to the Fire Rescue Capital Project Fund and will increase the, or to rather, to the Fire Rescue Capital Project Fund. It will increase the Capital Project Management Fund by five hundred thousand dollars. Be recognizing a long-term debt financing for the Public Works Yard Pipe Replacement Project. That will increase the Public Works Capital Project Fund by one point seven million dollars. Item G will move funds from Financial Services to the Neighborhood and Business Services Department for MWBE Services. That will be in the general fund and will have no budgetary impact. And then we have item H to recognize annual funding received from ZUC for energy assistance. And that will increase the Community Development Capital Project Fund by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As I mentioned before, we have a number of one-time project funding, which will total one point seven million dollars. Those include the Community Center Pathway at the Epps Recreation Center, the Sports Connection Batting Tunnel replacement for three hundred thousand dollars. We also have Eastside and Wildwood Park Projects. Elm Street Drainage Improvements will be funding projects for Merchants Alley, as well as Kensington Bridge Maintenance and the Brightspeed Project as well for locating inspections. That would bring the total operating fund budget per this amendment to a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. And we ask that council approve the budget ordinance.
Can I question?
Yes. We got questions. Councilmember Willis.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So my question is the sports complex task force, forty-five thousand dollars. What are we, can you break that down a little bit as to what that, those funds go toward?
Yes, that is part of the ongoing project to look at having a sports complex in Greenville.
Right.
The next part was going to be to kind of organize a community task force through the consultant that we have been working with. And those are costs just to pay for the consultant as they help us get community engagement, community involvement within the project.
That's just for the consultant?
I believe so.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's just to have the consultant engage the process.
Okay. How much did we already pay for the study? Does anybody remember?
That's the Recreation Department head to come up and talk a little about, he has more detail than I do about that.
All right, good evening.
Previously, we engaged with the Vegas Advisors. They started about last summer to do a sports feasibility study. Total, it was around sixty thousand dollars that we put towards that. That was a nine-month process. That basically determined that as we presented to council that a baseball softball complex would be the top economic impact for the community. That's how much we have funded so far for this. And this new project will take it a step further as Mr. Joyner mentioned about getting more community engagement to see what partners we can create throughout the community to see if we can move this project forward. As we, I think we discussed this in a previous council meeting, basically we got several members of the community a part of it. Several of you have put representatives on this committee and that process starts in two weeks, actually.
About how long are we thinking the, the process would be in terms of the work that the task force would do? Twelve months, eighteen months?
So the, the process will, will be that when they start meeting, the, maybe quarterly, we'll bring that information back to council and give an update on the progress. And then finally, a, probably a final within six months, I would say by March. March to April timeframe.
Thank you, guys.
Councilor Blackford?
Just to confirm, to make sure I've got my math right, so far we spent a hundred and five thousand dollars researching the sports complex. Is that right? Is that the right total?
Um, yes, ma'am. Once we include this current budget amendment, it'll bring total up to about a hundred and five thousand.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We shall move on to item number nine.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number nine would be the municipal agreement for HB zero zero two one, replacement of bridge in four nineteen over Bell's Branch on Oxford Road. This is a item that was, that we sent some information to you a couple of days ago. That is an NC DOT project to replace one of our bridges. It's a project that's fully funded by the NC DOT and a municipal agreement is needed to go ahead and move that project forward. You got that information there at your, your desk. If there's any question you might have, I will have our, our engineer, Lisa Kirby, come forward, ask any question.
I think I know somebody that should probably make the motion on this one.
Any questions? I'm excited about it.
Man, I just got a total tip of the hat to city staff and state DOT for coming together so quickly on this.
Well, say we have, we have been out a couple of times to do presentations to the community. They're very much appreciated.
I want to add to that, thanks. Through the whole process, identifying the damage of the bridge, figuring out as quickly as possible how to speed up the process with replacement and then finding a way to allow traffic to flow in both directions for residents and for business at the clubhouse. I think is a really, really wonderful job. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Oh. Councilmember Robinson beached to it. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We got item number ten, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an announcement of a settlement regarding a closed session item that you heard on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. KLA Holdings petitioner versus the City of Greenville pursuant to state law. I'm just announcing the terms of the settlement. The owner, KLA, completely released the city from any and all claims of monetary damages, including any and all claims for attorney fees that the owners now have arising from the city's pursuit of alleged ordinance violations for the preparation and the recordation of a recombination affidavit and a recombination plat. And the city in turn agreed to rescind and withdraw its notices of violations issued on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one to KLA Holdings. So I ask that those, the terms of that settlement be entered into the minutes. I have a copy of the agreement and the court's dismissal. And I ask that the council just adopt the motion that the terms be placed in the city clerk's minutes.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. City Manager report.
Review of the August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council agenda. I will ask that, that, that agenda be placed on the screen for the community to look at. Hold for a few seconds for that.
Where's our theme music?
We need, we need some theme music.
We do need some Jeopardy music.
I will work on that.
Please, no.
Does anybody want to sing? I got a microphone here.
And Mr. Manager, these, this meeting will happen rain or shine?
At this moment in time, we are moving full steam ahead.
Awesome.
Might be, I might have to take the boat to get here. Okay, so, City Manager report. As you know, we are hosting the Little League Softball World Series this week at the Stalling Stadium at Elm Street Park. As part of our ongoing celebration of the city's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the city's Public Information Office has put together a feature video, video of the history of the Elm Street Park. For tonight's meeting, we have shortened this video, it's about five minutes long, but we've shortened it to just give you a small taste of the full feature and get you fired up for the softball in City Greenville. So roll the tape.
Elm Street Park. For more than seventy years, it has served as a hub for social and recreational activities in the city of Greenville. From its earliest days as Greenville's only Little League field, to its current standing as one of the nicest Little League facilities in the country, Elm Street Park continues to be a popular destination for making memories in the city. In two thousand and twenty, the legacy of Elm Street Park grew as it was announced as the new home of the Little League Softball World Series. A change from the park's baseball roots, but an opportunity to showcase it on an international stage. And now each August, teams from around the globe descend upon Elm Street to vie for the softball crown and enjoy the park that has been beloved by locals for generations.
So, again, there is the full, the full feature video can be found at our website, two hundred and fifty dot Greenville NC dot gov. You can go out there and find not only that video, but as well as a host of information about our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And please, community, get out and support your, your local team, as well as all the, the young ladies from across the country and the world that have come to Greenville to compete for the championship as well. What you see on your screen there, next is our UDO schedule. We are getting ready to hit the road for the Uniform Development Ordinance Rewrite Project. This is a very, very comprehensive project and your input from the public is very much needed as part of this. So you can see as the schedule is presented on the screen, to take heed of those dates and come out and let your voice be heard. And then finally, we do know that there is a tropical storm Debbie that is circling around out there. And as a city, we are in the process of taking much precautions to be able to present, prepare our city as much as possible for any rain and wind that may occur. We are, have our public's work crews outright this minute to be removing trees from the Greens Mill Run, as well as other stormwater conveyances. We are also utilizing our street sweepers to be able to clear the gutters, the drain, the stormwater drains and major streams in the city of Greenville. But you too can do your part by helping us out because localized flooding, if you've lived in Greenville, you know that it will occur in specific areas. So take a look at your catch basins and the residential neighborhoods. Help us to be able to remove the debris prior to the storm, removing leaves, pine straw or other litter from the storm drains in front of your residents. And also remember that if you come across any barricades in the road, don't go through them. Turn around, don't drain. We want everybody to be safe during, during this week of a lot of rain. So be careful out there. Mayor, that's all I got.
Very nice, very nice. Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you very much. First, congratulations to our local all-star team. They are now two and O and they have just shut down two teams on what, the mercy rule, Mayor? Is that what we call it? Their bats are lively, so if you have a chance, come out and see them play. But once again, the Greenville and Don and his staff and everybody participated, all Greenville staff went last night and Councilmember Daniels and I were there and her friend Deborah Shepherd and Greg Lester from Champions Gym and JJ McLam from the ECU Athletics was there with his kid and the mayor was there with his family. Just what a well-run organization. I mean, to watch the, the, the sports take place and know we're on a national platform, an international platform and see all that take place. And I could not be more proud of the city of Greenville for putting that on the way it's run. I mean, to be able to park and get shouldered over and have food and then watch world-class young ladies play some softball. An amazing event for Greenville to be able to host that. It's just truly amazing. Every year I've gone, I always get amazed. I'm just truly amazed at what Greenville's doing and what we're capable of. And I think it also illustrates the need for a sports complex here. But Don, to all your staff and the city staff of Greenville, put that on. Thank you so much for the hard work because it, you make it look easy, but we all know how, how many man and women hours go into putting that on. And so thank you for, for doing all that and good luck to our players. Brandon Peoples, one of the coaches, as, as y'all know, he's one of our local police officers, police officers, and, and he is a great coach. Along that line, unfortunately, we lost somebody in our community on Sunday, Rami Steins. Well-known, played baseball at ECU, was a catcher, opened up a local business, stayed here, was a coach in our, in our various Little Leagues and programs and was also an ACU basketball official. Dedicated official, well-known throughout our state and outside and was actually coaching a team in Georgia on Saturday. And unfortunately, on the plane, encountered some medical difficulties and, and passed away. So I know this community is mourning him and I join with you in mourning him. But there's prayers and peace for his family to have peace and comfort at this time and, and know that he, he left a big legacy. So I'm sure he's upstairs smiling big at all of his legacy downstairs, here in Greenville and Pitt County and outside of the state. So I ask you to keep his family and his close friends in your prayers and thoughts as we go about our week and the time to come. Because when anything like that happens, it's such a big shock, you don't expect it. And so it's just, can, you can be overcome with it, especially his wife and family. So I'd ask you to keep them in their thoughts and prayers. Also, I hope everybody has some patience because in the next seven to ten days, we're getting ready to get a bunch of students here in Greenville. So have a little extra measure of patience as they come back in. And a lot of first timers moving back in with their kids and everything, so it's going to be kind of hectic. As to the, the storm goes, I can only echo City Manager's comments. I'm gonna shout out to my wife. She was texting me pictures this afternoon because she was out in our backyard cleaning up our catch basins. It had pine straw over it to make sure our backyard's drained. So I hope everybody will go back and look in their yards. And if you do have a catch base in your yard, go try and get it uncovered and, and if it has something in it, try and get it out if you can. So hopefully it'll drain better. And please, please don't try and drive through standing water, flooding water, or go around barricades because that's the, the number one killer in, in these types of events is people who drown, cars get flooded and whatnot. So just stay home if you can because we're supposed to get a shortened amount of rain. So please do that. And shout out to all the Greenville staff. I know it's working hard right now and y'all be safe and careful out there. And I think that is all I had to say tonight. So Mayor, thank you.
Very nicely said.
Thank you for letting me out and make those comments.
Anytime, anytime. Councilman Foreman?
I will just kind of not even reiterate, but agree with many of the things that, that the other councilmen said, but also want to lift up as it relates to the storm coming this week. We mentioned people staying in their homes and not being out on the road, but that we all need to be mindful of those people that do not have a home. And be putting some extra effort in over the next couple of days to try to make accommodations and show some love to those people. and show some love to those people that may not have a home, as we have many of them in our city.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Scully.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be back. We had a really exciting summer as a city. It was really wonderful participating in all the events around the Nipro Project, coming to the industrial park, really, really excited. It was fun to be a part of that, especially part of the, the Japanese ceremony to bless the grounds. That was a really fascinating and wonderful celebration to be a part of. So can't wait to get to know our new neighbors better, and to welcome them to our community, and to see the exciting stuff that they're going to be bringing us, including over 200 jobs. So really excited about that. We're working over at the library. I'm their board liaison, working on hiring a new library head. It's been an exciting process to be a part of, so I'm excited to see when that announcement comes out. But we have a really wonderful board, really great library system, and thank you so much to Mr. Greg for all of his work. How many is his last name? I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Greg Needham has done such a wonderful job. He's getting ready to retire, so if you see him in the community, please tell him thank you for all the really great stuff he's done throughout our library system, and really excited about all the, the fun things that will be happening with our new director moving forward. And also want to keep being a cheerleader for downtown. We continue to have lots of exciting construction projects, and they are exciting. It's going to be really beautiful streetscape when it's finished. The hotel's going to be wonderful and beautiful, draw business and people down to our city center. But in the meantime, we really need to do our part to go, continue to go and support those small businesses. They really are the heart and soul of our community, not just saying that because I am one, but it's a really wonderful, special community down there, and those businesses are just so important to our economy and to our, our whole, our whole city and culture. So please continue to, to go down there and support those businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, and thank you to every one of my peers on council who have mentioned the things that are going on now, whether it's the softball, or trying to be especially compassionate when there is a hurricane or tropical storm, and also the Shinto blessing ceremony was especially moving. So all of these things are really, really good, really good things that are happening in our city and, and calling us to, to continue to be the best people that we can be as a city. I have something that I need to, to elevate, to shine a special attention on. I want to, first of all, thank my neighbors, Cory, Becca, and Brian, Angel, and Tracy. These are the people that I live with every day. We see each other every day, and there are more of us. There are 120 houses in the River Hills neighborhood, and these are my family. I've been there for 25 years now, and I feel in a special connection with my neighborhood. And I think that the River Hills spirit is that we feel a very strong connection with each other. We're a very tightly bound neighborhood. We are extremely concerned about what we see every day when we leave our neighborhood, and that is 10th Street East. That is an area that has, has grown without what seems to be intentionality and care for the people who live there. There are many, many, many curb cuts, there's not enough signalization, there's no zebra stripes, there's no pedestrian crosswalks at the corner of Port of Town and 10th Street. 10th Street, every day when I leave out of there, whether I'm turning right or left, which you really don't want to do, you're taking your life into your hands. I literally pull out and I just hold my breath and pray that there's not a maniac going 80 miles an hour who's going to run into me. This is a very real concern, and I know there are other areas of our city that have traffic problems, but let me just say that 10th Street East is extremely dangerous and hazardous, and frankly, has been overlooked. And so what I'm asking tonight is that, for the sake of people living on 10th Street East, all of us, and, and especially because of the dangers that we in River Hills experience with the new development on the corner of River Hills and 10th Street East, I'm asking that we have a meeting with some urgency with the State Department of Transportation and with our city staff as appropriate, as determined by our city manager, engineering, traffic. I'd like to get the county manager involved, county staff, because Lake Glenwood is in the county, and it's, they're, they're dealing with this as well, and whoever else it may be, appropriate to invite. What we need, we need support, we need some attention, we need some focus, because one thing I do not want to see is one of my neighbors in River Hills that gets killed out there because that is just waiting to happen right now. So before that happens, I would like to have a meeting so that we can bring some attention to this area, because one of the things that we hear is, well, the numbers just don't show a need for a traffic light or a step-down lane. There's just not enough, you know, collisions or whatever. I don't want it to get to, to that level of collisions. I don't want to see a fatality out there. We've seen throughout our city where we'll have a fatality, and we're like, oh, you know, or the state, or whoever the agency is, this is not finger pointing, but we'll have a fatality, and we'll say, okay, I guess it's time to put up a stoplight. We don't want that to happen. We don't need that to happen. We need to try to address this now. So I am asking Mr. City Manager, if you would, to arrange this so that we can get some attention to that area before it gets entirely out of hand with this new pediatrics office that's going up, that's going to be bringing 200 cars in and out of River Hills every day, as well as the apartments, as we mentioned earlier, as well as all the development that has taken east of Mr. Clark. Mr. Bill Clark has built quite a few new townhouses down there and apartments that are going up over near Lake Glenwood. This is an exploding area, and we need some attention to it. So I appreciate your attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Welcome again to the Little League World Series. I wanted to remind the community about the community engagement meeting for those north of the river, or those that are interested in the expansion of the airport tomorrow at 5:30 in their conference room, and hoping that everyone's safe and they're preparing for the pending weather that we have coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Daniels?
July was Recreation and Parks Appreciation Month, but we were not here, so I would like to give a special thank you to our Recreation and Parks Department for all that they do. I think a lot of times people don't realize exactly how much they do, that they're the first to arrive, the last to leave, and they put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to ensure that our programs and our, the services that the city gives to the public are top-notch. So you all are definitely appreciated, and I thank you for that. I want to reiterate what everyone said, be safe out in this upcoming weather, don't drown, turn around. Yeah. It's, it's easy to think when you see water somewhere that is not that deep or not, you know, but please just be safe. If, if you don't have to leave the house, don't at this point. I'd like to, I was watching the Little League games last night, and not only are these young ladies just awesome players, but they are getting once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, they're meeting other cultures, they're engaging with one another, meeting new people, and I just think that's just such a wonderful thing for them. And so for each and every team, I'm just excited to watch them move forward and play. I'd like to give kudos to our fire rescue department for saving a gentleman who flipped over on his kayak not so long ago. There's so much that goes on in our city that people don't know about, and I'd just like to acknowledge something that's special to all of us. And last but not least, I would like to thank Madam Clerk, Ms. Valerie, for all the work that you do, for keeping up with all of us, with a smile on your face, for being accessible day and night to all of us, and know that you are appreciated. Yeah. That'll be all, Mr. Mayor.
Never ever ruin, I'm saying again, never ever.
You, you beat me to the punch. That's the first thing I was going to say, you know, and I have had the pleasure to work with Valerie for, let's see, I'm on my ninth year here. How long have you been the city clerk now?
Last time I've been, I think, fifth year.
Fifth year, fifth year, and I will say that it has been an absolute pleasure to work with Valerie, and every constituent that comes into my office to come and speak with the mayor always has nothing but positive things to say about Valerie. She does an incredible job, her staff does an incredible job. Usually that's the first appearance that anybody sees when they come to the, to, to the office to see either myself or another council member or anything dealing with city business, and Valerie does an incredible job and treats people with dignity and respect every time that they come in there. I get emails all the time talking about how she is just a wonderful, kind-hearted person and gave them exactly what they needed. So we thank you, thank your staff for all that you guys do, thank all of our staff for all that you guys do every day, and unfortunately, we can't please everybody all the time, but I do know that you do the best that you possibly can, and you do a great job doing that, so. Also, I want to encourage people to get out to the Little League Softball World Series. It is an incredible honor for the city of Greenville to be able to host this amazing event. We get a tremendous amount of national and international exposure. Little League has allowed us to be the home of the Little League Softball World Series, which is a great, great honor. We have 12 teams that are here that come from all over the place. The Philippines, they got in here on, was it Saturday night? I think they flew into Raleigh, they got in about 8 o'clock, and they got to Greenville, I'm guessing probably sometime after 10 o'clock, and all of our local girls that are representing the state of North Carolina waited up for them to come and applauded them and gave them a warm welcome as they came, which was really cool. I mean, that's a team that they played, so your opponents showing up and, you know, congratulating the girls for making it there, you know, welcoming them, you know, you can just imagine coming from a foreign country, walking into a dorm room and, and a university that you've never heard of before, in a city and a state that you've probably never heard of before, and having a bunch of people applaud for you. That's a pretty cool experience. So kudos to all of the coaches and the teammates that were there to do that, but it's an incredible experience. These girls go out there and they compete on a big stage. Many of them may never have the opportunity to play on ESPN and/or ABC as they get closer to the end of the tournament, but it's really neat. It's a great environment. Last night was awesome to see our girls out there competing. I'd say there were, what, maybe 1,500, 2,000 people that were there last night from our local community supporting these girls. It was really neat. So if you get an opportunity this week, weather permitting, I know our girls play, I think, next on Thursday at 7 o'clock. I'm going to have a slight guess that it possibly might be rained out, but we'll see. But make sure you get out there and support them. It's a great experience down there. The city of Greenville is very, very thankful for the opportunity to be able to host it, and we thank Little League International for giving us that opportunity. So get out there and go out and support our girls, our local girls. North Carolina, we're 2-0. We gave up our first two hits in the, the tournament, but our girls won last night, 10 to nothing, 16 to nothing tonight. So get out there and support them. They're good. They finished second in the entire world last year. I think they returned about seven girls from last year's team, so we've got a great chance to win it all. So get out there and support them. They're representing Team North Carolina, so. And then finally, just a reminder, a lot of our council members have said it tonight, make sure that you pay attention to the radar. I am a huge advocate, don't listen to your politicians. Advice for dealing with tropical storms, listen to your meteorologists. Politicians don't know what they're talking about, so. Make sure you listen to your meteorologists. I will post stuff that I hear from meteorologists because they're the experts at it, but make sure that you pay attention, keep an eye on it. We all are looking at the weather right now, and we think something's going to happen. Tomorrow would be probably a completely different scenario, so make sure you pay attention. We could get six inches of rain, we could get eight inches of rain, 10 inches of rain, 12 inches of rain, who knows how much rain we're going to get, but make sure that you're careful out there and you make precautions and, and do what you have to to keep yourself and your family safe. With that, I'm going to look at our city attorney to go into a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.118A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuit entitled Shawn Ranbert, Sr., co-administrator of the estate of Shawn Michael Ranbert, Jr., and Danielle Cox Ranbert, co-administrator of the estate of Shawn Michael Ranbert, Jr., plaintiff's appellees versus City of Greenville and David Brandon Johnson in his individual and official capacities, defendant's appellants. Second and separate reason, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, to discuss and take action regarding plans to protect public safety as it relates to existing or potential terrorist activity, and to receive briefings by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement or emergency service officials concerning actions taken or to be taken to respond to such activity.
Second.
Motion been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.